It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the June 20th City Council meeting to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Daniels?
Here.
Anna Michael?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Murdock?
Here.
Ritter?
Here.
Everyone's present, Mayor.
Okay. I would ask you all, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item tonight is our consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion first, please.
Oh, sure.
I'd like to make a motion, we add item 3B under Old Business to include, consider approval of Hike Town Commerce Park for final plat.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Here. Roll call.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anna Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
All right, now we will go to the consent agenda, which is the minutes from our council meeting of June 6th and Pay Ordinance Number 856. Any discussion of the consent agenda? If not, a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Not roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Anna Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
All right. Item 2 is called to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under called to public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There is a four-minute time limit. If you wish to speak, please stand to be recognized. Daryl, step to the podium, please.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Anyone else under called to public? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Old Business. Public hearing continued from our June 6th, 2019, meeting. The project plan for Hike Properties LLC.
Yes, Council.
Just to get back before we...
Maybe. I can introduce just the general discussion topics. There has been one change since the last time you saw it relating to a timeframe to commence the public improvements, but that's what Patrick is printing off for you now, and he'll be able to explain that. This is basically a continuance of the public hearing that we started on June 6th. It's about the tax increment financing for the Hike Properties, which is along the north and south side of Commerce Drive. I think we did have quite a bit of discussion on this in May. We did discuss the general terms of the deal, the outline of the parameters of what's involved. In essence, this will be a deal that involves property tax only. Eighty percent of the property tax will be, eighty percent of the increased value of the property tax will be captured and refunded to the developer to reimburse him for expenditures of project expenses, which include only the roads and public infrastructure needed to complete the development. That amount is capped at $2 million, just a little bit over $2 million. So if the increment revenues exceed that amount earlier in the term, then $2 million and just a little over $2 million is all that will be refunded to the developer. It is a pay-as-you-go deal, so what that means is there aren't any public bonds involved with this. A lot of TIFs will have a bond that's issued by the city. That's not the case here. The developer will be financing this. In your staff report from the last meeting, we included some results of our discussion in May. There were four main issues that we talked about, the council talked about at that time, that we wanted to be included in the development agreement that is up for consideration tonight. The first one, and I've got those shown here, those are in your staff report. I see Patrick coming in now, that's good. The first one had to do with the developer making good faith effort to use local labor, local contractors in the construction of the project. That has been addressed. Page 10 of the agreement. The second one has to do with having new tenants join and be involved in the EDC and Chamber. We did include that provision in the agreement. It actually, it requires Hike Development to be members of the Chamber and EDC, and it also asks them to encourage new tenants to also be involved in that. This one's a little different of a TIF deal because the intent is to make the lots pad site ready and then sell those to tenants, so Hike Properties won't necessarily be the owner of these lots long-term. So that's why there's a good faith effort that's required of the developer to encourage those tenants to also be members of the Chamber and EDC. There is also a discussion about prohibition against challenging the assessed values. That has been addressed. I'll let Patrick explain that a little bit more. And then, we also talked about the level of incentives, whether or not initially the application came in with the $2 million as an estimate, and they were asking to actually reimburse above that if the price of the project came in higher. That was negotiated out, as was interest on any financing associated with that. So that essentially is the terms of the deal. I think I'll turn it over to Patrick. Kevin Wimpy is also here this evening, helped us negotiate the agreement with Hike Properties throughout the process, so they'll be able to answer questions you might have, and then also address this latest revision that Patrick just handed out relating to a timeframe.
Thank you, Mike.
Turn your mic on.
Sorry. On the protest of the valuation, that's under Section 5.03, and essentially the language we came up with is that the developer could pursue a tax appeal, but they would have to get the written consent of the city administrator, and the appraised value of the tax parcel would have to be grossly overvalued or made as a result of material error. So it's not an outright prohibition, but, and we just sort of talked about, since Mike, you know, deals with the county appraiser anyway for our budget thing, the thought was that Mike would have a good idea if it did appear to be overvalued. Now, that would only apply to Hike Properties, so as properties are sold off, then, you know, this permission from the city administrator would not apply. And then, I don't know if Mike went over the change. Really, the only change that's been made since last time, this was before you, is Hike Properties asked to have a year period to commence construction. So what I handed out to you is in Section 4.02, that's been revised to indicate that they have to start construction no later than June 20 of 2020. So it gives them some more time to get their ducks in a row. And the only other thing we wanted to point out is that if June of 2020 comes and the, there is no construction for whatever reason, the deal, you know, what was thought would happen is not happening, the city's recourse would be to simply cancel the TIF, meaning, you know, the city would no longer be obligated to reimburse the developer, and then sort of, you know, we'd be back to ground zero at that point. So, Kevin, I don't know if you have anything else to want to share?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Wimpy from Gilmore and Bell, the City Bond Council. Mr. Ungard, Mr. Reedy, covered all the business points relating to the development agreement. From there, I'll just kind of give you an overview of the TIF process and your actions before you tonight, and can also stand for any questions about the development agreement or the actions. But the first item is to continue the public hearing that began last meeting on June 6th, which was noticed up under the statute, so we'll reopen the public hearing. Following public comment, in closing the public hearing, the item before you will be an ordinance, which will, one, approve the TIF plan, which is the project plan prepared in conjunction with the developer, and really sets forth, you know, all the statutory requirements of the deal, you know, where it's located and broad strokes of what's going to be constructed there, and the types of revenues that will be used to repay certain project costs under the TIF Act. Second thing is it will approve the development agreement that Patrick and Mike just detailed, and a lot of the, I think, high-interest things they've already covered, but just to sort of rehash, it'll be, the city's agreeing, if the developer constructs the public improvements in accordance with the standards set forth in the development agreement, in the timeframe allotted, the city's agreeing to reimburse up to just in excess of $2 million of TIF-eligible costs, which will be repayable only from eighty percent of the incremental property taxes generated from the site over up to the next 20 years. There will be no sales tax reimbursement involved here. This TIF doesn't involve any sales tax capture. Last comment I'll make is Columbia Capital, the city's financial advisor, put together a But 4 analysis in accordance with the city's economic development policy, and their return was that this project passed that But 4 hurdle, in that But 4 providing the incentives, the project wouldn't happen, was the conclusion that Columbia Capital came to. That's it on the process for tonight. I can stand for any questions, and otherwise it will be on to opening the public hearing.
Questions for Mr. Wimpy?
Okay. Seeing none? I was just going to add, just for, in case people weren't here at the last meeting, just to make clear, if the efforts of the developer do not, you know, for some reason they did not increase the appraised value of the property, then the city's not on the hook for anything. This is essentially, the money being reimbursed is, will be developed through the efforts of the developers' improvements out there. So if that doesn't happen, then the city doesn't have any obligation on the project.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this matter, please step forward, state your name and address.
In honor of summer, I dressed appropriately, as did one Boy Scout and one of the gentlemen in the crowd, so I didn't want to say I came unfair. I am Dave Anderson, 9152 Shorewood. I sent everyone an email. Kevin, did you get it?
No, I don't believe so.
Did anyone else?
I got it.
Okay. I sent it to the emails that were on the website, so I'm not sure. But, so for those that didn't, it was rather small, short bullet points. I think most of you know my history here in the city. This is a perfect economic development tool that we have in our bag, and the project is exactly what TIF is for. Horizontal construction, the development of land. I think, it looks like from the staff report that you're concentrating on the development agreement, which is a good thing, because I cannot see why TIF is not, would not even be considered here. Not only that, I think you should be thinking about your economic development tools, because I think all the land north of 10 Highway, to say Sunflower Road, is, has the potential to be tipped in the future. It's really what the TIF is about. The Alatham Medical Ground, and then further west, that property could be in place as soon as the road is in. So TIF is the right tool for this kind of project. Second of all, I didn't want to read my points, so I'm trying to go by memory. The other thing that I've heard in the conversations in the community is a little concern, and it's good, poaching, or that's probably a big, stronger word than necessary. So I wanted to call your attention, and I didn't bring copies, but I think Sarah can get some. We did a trade analysis back in 2015, so it's four years old, and I would encourage you to think about doing that again. But in this analysis, what it did is it looked at a gap, so the trade gap, an analysis of the demographics here in the community, and the dollars spent, and what we're losing, you know, what the gap is, that's what they call it. Auto dealerships, cell phone, hardware stores, optical goods, sporting goods, and women's apparel were the largest six target industries, none of which we, to my knowledge, have in this town. So the likelihood in the marketplace is that, let's, we can use Mike and his liquor store, if you don't mind, Mike. The rents that are likely to be into this property in new construction, of which I'm a constructor, probably, well, push 20, 25 bucks a foot. Are you paying that now? You don't have to tell me what you're paying, but, so no. And so the demand for a higher cost to take over market share is probably not, not what a bank would underwrite. You know, if you wanted to open a liquor store, let's say, and do that, the bank's going to look at a trade profile, the amount of people that he's serving, and the other liquor store here in town. So the competition is probably going to say, that's not a good idea. On top of that, we had several issues come in front of our council when the very first other gas station came into town, which was Miners. The miners owned it, and there was a Subway shop, or a Good Sense on one end, and that was a big brouhaha. I think you heard about that. And then Casey's was another one, and now we have Harps. I think, I'd encourage you to ask Lana to help you see what the market growth has been in fuel. My belief is that those stores, they may have seen a dip, I don't know for sure, but they certainly didn't go out of business. So the market is also expanding. Again, go back to TIF as a retail tool, because you can't abate retail property. This is a perfect, perfect for a TIF, the project itself. So I think there's a lot of room in the market. This is what our economic tool is. If you have some pullback on it, it could have some, well, that wouldn't be good for the economic development of this community in our presentation to the market, if that makes sense. So I ask you to vote for it. I did in the email. And Kevin, you got any questions?
Anna Michael? No, I do not. And yes, I did see that email under my old council address, which is still listed on the website. So yes, I did get it, and I was able to read it. Thank you.
Stand for any questions, or...
Anything for Dave? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on this matter?
Good evening, Council Mayor Travis Hicks with Hike Properties, the subject request here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you know, Hike Properties is the developer of the remaining parcel there in Commerce Park, and we've applied for the TIF, the subject TIF, under discussion, so that certain public improvements can be made to enhance the current layout that we have there. These improvements will allow for a safer and more efficient development that minimizes the access points off of Commerce Drive versus the potential for several curb cuts along Harps, from Harps East to Hudamaki, given the current plat configuration. The new plat and approval of a TIF will allow for the subdivision of smaller retail and office uses in approximately one-acre lots. As you know, for over 30 years, Commerce Park has sat a good portion of it vacant, with little to no economic benefit to the city, schools, and other taxing jurisdictions, let alone the lack of services that could be available to our community. Over the last several years, as you know, Hike Properties has been successful in providing necessary services for the city of DeSoto, with an addition of the 30,000 square foot Harps grocery store, that included an $8 million investment. Additionally, the recently completed K-10 apartments, that included over $12 million in investment, has provided quality, reasonably-priced multifamily housing on a larger scale that the city of DeSoto has not seen. Local employees at Hudamaki, Mr. Good Sense, Harps, Merck, and the school district now have the opportunity to live where they work and do, all while they patronize the local businesses here in DeSoto, resulting in increased sales tax revenue, which I believe we have seen over the last couple of years. With the approval of this proposed TIF, this momentum can continue. The district hasn't anticipated $9 million in real estate value projected, along with several million dollars in sales tax revenue. This additional economic benefit, coupled with the more efficient, safer layout of the development, we believe are all in the best interest of the city long-term. Our lender has completed an appraisal for the proposed development, and this appraisal noted that the development would not be successful without the proposed TIF, thus our financing would not be available without it. Additionally, the city's financial advisor was arrived at the same conclusion, and finally, the conclusion was supported by a memo from the city staff. The lack of the TIF means that the Hike Properties development will not be in a position to do the new roads, which could delay the development along Commerce Drive, lead to undesirable curb cuts and a less efficient plan, and limit the potential for the city's long-term best interest. I encourage you to invoke, to approve the TIF as presented, and Hike Properties will work to do our best to provide a quality project that will be seen as a long-term asset for this community. Thank you, and I will take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hicks?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Any other comments tonight? All right, so then we will close the hearing?
Yeah.
Seeing none, I will officially close the public hearing, and we'll start our discussions
I guess I'll start with my, I am in favor of this project largely for the reasons that Travis just outlined. It's going to allow this property to develop in a way that we would like to see it developed that will be efficient in the lot layout, provide pad, build-ready pad sites for potential new businesses to come to town, safer access, avoid piecemeal development, and overall, provide the city with revenue on a piece of property that has generated zero tax for over the last 30 years. So those are my reasons for supporting this TIF application. And I would ask anybody else that wanted to comment, question, please.
Yeah, I'll make some comments, if you don't mind, Mayor. And mine are kind of written out, too, because I have a lot to say. This has been something that's been, like, in my mind and on my floor for the last three or four weeks, for a lot of reasons. It's probably one of the hardest things that I've dealt with, not necessarily that the decision right now is really hard to say, but it's been a big issue, and a lot of that's because I really truly support the project at hand, but when citizens and people come to me, I need to support what they want also, and so when small businesses come to me, those are things that are of great concern to me. And as you know, I'm a small business owner in this town also. So the first question, of course, was, you know, is this project going to have an advantage to the businesses that will be in the development over what we might already have? Is there going to be a duplicate? Is it going to, you know, water down the revenues from other ones that are here? Another question in the same line is, will businesses be negatively affected by it? Well, the new ones have an advantage, basically, is what it was, and, you know, it's a valid concern, and we've talked about it, and as I said, I'm a business owner, you know, a new pharmacy could go across the street here, a new liquor store could go in there. But the competition is, that's a decision that I can't make, what's going in there necessarily. So I kind of feel that that's something that we have to kind of wait and see. We don't know what those are going to be. Speaking with Travis, I don't believe that it's necessarily that the businesses are going to have a big advantage over the other areas in town. So, you know, that's been kind of, the more discussion I've had on that, I've kind of let that go, that that's probably not going to be a true case on that. Any of the businesses, any business could go in there right now, and the difference is, though, is that what we're going to have is a better layout of how those businesses would be if we vote for this project. The improvements are what we really want for our city to have. As far as the negative effect of them, you know, we've had three fast food businesses in town before, you know, so we can't really say another fast food is going to, you know, kill the ones that we have, because that's, you know, that's not really, I don't think, a big concern anymore. But positive-wise, I think financially for the city, between taxes, utilities, and the amenities that we have, the visibility on the highway of what will bring people in, I think those are all improvements for the city. Other comment I had heard was, you know, are we really ready for this? Is DeSoto going to be able to handle more restaurants and everything? You know, I've said that myself. You know, I can go anywhere in town and walk right in. I can go to the doctor's office, I can go to the eye doctor, I can go just about everywhere, any restaurant, and walk right in and sit down and eat. But you know what? I would hope that it will bring more people here, and, you know, that's the developer, and that's the business who's coming in's decision to make whether they can do that. I drove to Bonner Springs for something that I needed the other day, and driving back through Bonner Springs, realized that that town is not that much bigger than ours, but look what they all have in that community, and that those businesses support that community, and the communities support their businesses. So again, those are risks that are not on the city here, and not really even risks on the individual businesses we already have in town. Those are risks that the businesses moving in are putting in on their own. Another valid, well, I think a concern that I have is, that I did have, is bringing in too many more minimum wage jobs when we really don't seem to have that workforce here already. So I do hope that's something that we will work on as a city for the workforce, but again, that's the businesses coming in that are going to have that concern. But I think that, you know, I hope we get some good paying jobs that come out of this, and not just all minimum wage, fast food restaurants and restaurants that, you know, it's a challenge, I think, already, why do you probably would say, already, to keep those positions filled in town already. But the biggest deciding factor here is what we've already heard tonight, and that is that I am on City Council, have been for eight years promoting our town in economic development, and I've been on the Economic Development Council for the last three, four years, and doing the same thing. years, and doing the same thing, promoting economic development. And we offer incentives, and this TIF is one of the incentives that we offer. This is the perfect use of that TIF, and if I was going to vote against what is best for the city in whole because of fear of my business or fear of one or two other businesses, that's really not, I don't deserve to be sitting up here. So even though I've been back and forth on this for the last three weeks, you know, I too am going to have to vote in, in favor of, or I am in favor of this, this project going on. Those aren't really all my notes, but I think you guys are bored with me, and basically they're kind of saying the same thing. I think I would like to focus on the good that it will bring to the city and not try to think about the negatives, because all the negatives are just speculation. The positives are here for us, and we, we can only grow, and if we, as a community, support whatever comes here, everybody, even the ones here, are going to grow and develop also. So I'll stop from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Lori. Rob, anything?
The purpose and function of a TIF, as Dave mentioned, this meets that exactly. The safety of it, this was two council meetings ago, as we were looking at the map, I was asking, okay, if we didn't do the TIF, what's the safety aspect of the ability to have entrances to those lots? Effectively, you would have to eliminate three businesses, taxpaying entities, sales tax from those properties in the current plat, without the TIF to where you would have less business, less opportunity, less sales tax to the city, less property tax, and that's even the twenty percent. The TIF as it is, is on the above and beyond what we already make on the property tax, which has been nothing. When we moved here eleven years ago, twelve years ago, we moved here because it was a small town, but it was a growing small town. I've heard a lot of people talk about, and the fact that we want to keep it a small town, and I don't see the ability to radically change the fact that we are going to continue to be that small-town feel with the size of lots, the properties that we have, things like that. So there's a lot of times in the development where people are the pros, the cons, the apartments, okay, are they going to be priced right, are they going to be affordable, are they going to succeed? And as we've seen with that project, it is filling, it's filling to pretty good capacity. I've got a son who just graduated high school, he's not going to be going to college in this area, but when he was considering Juco, it was a matter of, okay, if you're looking to find an apartment with a roommate, look into Soto, because comparatively to John's County, the rates are affordable. When you start looking at what's being proposed here, like a Burger King, okay, it may not be the hiring jobs, but my son that just graduated college, or not college, high school, he drives to Latha to one hundred nineteenth and I-35 and works at Popeyes, when if there were jobs here, he would potentially be able to have them here locally, instead of having to drive that far. He worked at QuickTrip over on Chyminson Parkway. So beyond McDonald's, beyond Harps, there's not a lot of jobs for our students here as well. So whether it's a mix of good-paying jobs through medical facilities, eye care, whether it be retail, it's going to bring a broad variety, or at least the option of a broad variety of jobs for varying different sectors, varying different needs, with minimal risk to the city, as well as an increase in sales tax revenue that we don't have right now. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Rob. Kevin, anything to add?
Yeah, I will repeat what everybody else has already said, in favor of it. The governing bodies, prior to my arrival on the council, adopt this, this incentive plan, and this is, is what it's for. This land has been trying to be developed for over thirty years, and I agree, I agree with it. I just have one, one question on the agreement, if I could. On the memorandum that Patrick sent out on May tenth, line two, talking about the encouragement of the developer to encourage folks to join the chamber in the EDC, and then he references page eleven of the agreement. I think that's great, and we, we support services that already encourage folks to join the chamber in the EDC, but what I would like to know is that, I think if we're going to give incentives to developers, that I think those folks, we should make sure that they are meeting the highest level of commitment to those two entities, the EDC and the chamber. And so I'd just like to ask if, if Hike Properties does join, or is a member of the EDC in the chamber at the highest level? Anybody can answer that?
Councilman Ritter, yes, Hike Properties is a member of the chamber and the EDC. I don't believe we are at the highest level on the EDC. We do have, I don't believe the chamber has certain levels based upon number of employees, but our apartments are also members of the BOBO, so as far as membership, that can be discussed on the EDC.
I guess lastly, I would, I am in favor, but I would like to, we're going to give an incentive to somebody, I would like to see you do it at the highest level possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Danny, anything?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a good idea on the TIF, and it's a good focus for us to look at into this development. I do appreciate the developer that is making, going to make a reasonable effort for the businesses during construction process on these developments, and tried to utilize local labor, vendors, and the, and the businesses here locally, and, you know, going through the bid process and stuff, and he's going to try to work that in conjunction with the request of the city, the city administrator, and give us feedback on that, and I appreciate Travis for allowing this to be put in the TIF agreement, so that we can work together and utilize some of our local talent at this time, too. That's all I had, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Kevin, Hunter Michael, would you have any questions or any comments you'd like to make?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, I am in favor of the use of incentives for economic development purposes, and in this particular situation, I think that this project is structured in a way that creates opportunities for DeSoto. I also think that refocusing the use of this property makes a lot of sense to adapt to current market conditions. It's been sitting, intended for industrial use for decades, and that hasn't come to pass. We obviously need to find areas in the community that would be suitable for that. So I do think it makes a lot of sense, hopefully, to activate the property by, by repositioning it for a different market. Specific concerns that I had have been met previously, or at least addressed previously, that would have caused me to not be in favor of, of the whole situation here. So I do have a couple little things that are related to the agreement, but in broad terms, I'm in support. I do think that I would like to have some follow-on discussions, particularly a follow-on to the workshop that we had about use of economic incentives, to make sure that we, as a council, know how we can use incentives to accomplish the strategic initiatives that we've set out by the city. For example, you know, I think some of the types of businesses or uses that would be attracted to this area through now aggressively marketing it and positioning it, are the kinds of things that could, could locate in other areas of the community, either downtown or along Lexington, and create some synergy in other parts of our community. So, you know, I just want to be careful that when we do use incentives going forward, that we are applying them at the locations and in manners that are accomplishing our strategic initiatives. Couple of little specific questions I had. In the eligible costs, there are fees in there for purchase of the right-of-way, and I guess typically when land is subdivided, it, the right-of-way is dedicated, and the city does not actually purchase that right-of-way, but in this case, tax money, or deferred tax money, is being used to purchase the right-of-way. So I wanted to, wanted to hear from Mike a little bit about that thought. And then my second question is, what constitutes, regarding the schedule item, I think it's, I forget, four oh two or four twenty or something to that effect, what constitutes the start of construction or diligently pursuing construction? So, because I've seen this before as well, when time comes, construction starts in the form of some grading, and then tails off because it has started. So I want to be sure that we're clear on what, what the requirements are of that particular clause. So that concludes my comments, and I'm going to go back on mute.
All right, thank you. Yeah, to answer Councilman Hunter Michael's question about the right-of-way purchase being included in the TIF reimbursement, it, it is legally allowed, and I'll look to Kevin Wimpy or Patrick to correct me on, if I'm not correct on that. It is a legal, a legal project expense, that's a reimbursable project expense. It wouldn't be the case for the purchase of the entire property if all the, that's not an eligible expense, is that correct, Kevin?
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition, wouldn't be.
It is eligible.
It is, it is eligible, but the developer isn't requesting reimbursement for that, but he's prorated that based on a square footage, on a square footage basis, to just include the area that is represented in the right-of-way. Councilman Hunter Michael is correct, the city never pays for right-of-way. If this was just a greenfield subdivision, the right-of-way would be dedicated, as would the streets and construction of, of the improvements afterward. So right, that's not typically a, a, something that the city would pay for. But again, you know, this, this isn't a typical sort of subdivision process here. So really, I, I think that's really all the wisdom I can give on the, the right-of-way cost part of that. And then Patrick, I think Councilman Hunter Michael's second question related to the timing clause, so I'll maybe let you and Kevin take that one.
Sure. And I, I mean, as Kevin pointed out, it is, it's not super specific, but, you know, my thought is if, if we felt like, you know, they were dragging their feet, definitely the agreement provides mechanisms where, you know, we could find them to be in default. But again, if, so I think the only scenario where, you know, this would come up is if, for example, they started, as you say, Kevin, they started pushing dirt and then stopped for whatever reason. I mean, I feel like that scenario, we're definitely covered, because the agreement says, once they commence construction, they have to diligently prosecute it to completion. But if they don't commence construction, that's the comment I made earlier, really, they, they would be considered in default, but essentially the city at that point would have the authority to cancel the TIF out, and that would be up to the city to take that initiative. So if, you know, it's June thirtieth, 2020, and they haven't started construction, the city council would clearly have the authority to, you know, pass, pass a resolution or ordinance formalizing that, that the TIF is no longer available to the developer. So Kevin, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just horrified now, as we're clearly saying thirty consecutive days or sixty in aggregate for cessation of construction. If I can, number of days in there, my guess would be that name to pass, that would be a nice communication with the developer.
Okay. Okay. Did that answer your questions, Kevin?
Uh, yes, it did. It did answer my question regarding the, the right-of-way cost, you know, it is legally eligible, so it's just a matter of, you know, maybe what do the other council members think about, are we, do we unfairly position one project over another by effectively reimbursing the developer for the cost of the right-of-way, as opposed to a project that may come in without incentives, where they have to donate the, the land, in essentially every other case? Just a, just a thought, it doesn't make, it doesn't, I'm not against the TIF in, in itself, but I just want us to be aware of that scenario with the right-of-way acquisition. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, any other questions or comments from the council? If not, I guess our next step then would be to...
Yeah, there's two items, there's the development agreement, and then there's an approval of an ordinance that is attached as Exhibit E in your staff packet.
So if we wanted to, first of all, tackle the development agreement, then it could be as written?
Yeah, actually by approving the ordinance to approve the development.
Okay, so then if we do the ordinance, then this is just the one action.
Right, but if there are any, any revisions.
Provisions are different, right. Yeah. So I guess I heard two mentioned, Councilman Ritter asked that we would request participation in the EDC at the highest level as a condition of the TIF. Just poll the council to see if that is something we would like to have written into, I forget what section that was.
Kevin, do you have an idea? Do you want that to be the whole length of the TIF for, for so many years, or, I mean...
I think it should be the length of the TIF. I mean, I think if we're going to incent somebody, some, you know, given incentive to the developer, it should be the entire time. That was my initial thoughts now for discussion.
I guess I'm probably not going to be in favor, I mean, you're not going to like my comments about this, but in favor of Travis on this, but, so what we have right now is a high level could change in two years, and we could all of a sudden say, hey, you know, we've got Travis on the hook here, let's double the highest level, so he has to be on that. So I guess I'm kind of a little concerned that what...
I would think it was at the highest level, not, not an increased level.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know what that level is now, and I know that, you know, we could change that tomorrow, so, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that's a little harder, hard to kind of follow up in years, in the future, as far as what that amount is and what that level is at.
And I don't believe it was my intent to increase it, it was just, it's Dave's...
Yeah, well, I know, but it probably will at some point, I would hope. I mean, that's kind of one of our intentions of trying to get more money into it, is getting these levels different, so...
I think just to add to that, I think if that, if it was consent to the council, I think we'd probably want to just impose that for as long as the developer owned the property out there.
Sounds good.
Because if they sell everything off, then it wouldn't be, wouldn't be enforceable.
Creable. Any other thoughts or ideas on that? I would ask Sarah, what is the highest, what is the investment at the highest level in the EDC today?
Actually, it's at one thousand five.
Okay. So fifteen hundred.
Is that a month?
Per year.
I'm agreeable with that amount, and I'm also agreeable with the statement that Patrick said about the, is the land was sold off. That's a thirty thousand dollar commitment over the life of the...
If you do it the whole thing, if he sells off the land before then, and, you know, which is his intention, to have that done in a few years.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't care what it, you know, I don't know how to make that into a good fair.
Statement, uh, uh, condition?
Condition, I, I, I don't know. Anybody have any ideas?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. I'm working on a project with the city of Medriton, and they require the developer to develop... the development agreement to use the lowest amount, which is twenty-five hundred dollars a year. But that's the state is, they don't talk about the lowest, the highest rate that they say.
Fifteen, yeah, same, so.
Yeah, similar suggestion, I was going to say, you could say.
Define it.
Yeah, it's a define imposed as of, uh, highest level imposed as of the date of this agreement or for the length that the developer owns the real estate on the site or something to that, to that effect.
Great, agreed. Is everybody okay with that? We just said fifteen hundred dollars for the, like, the time that the developer owns the project.
Are Travis okay with that? Okay. Do you need some kind of a?
Um, we don't need, we don't have to have that inked. I mean, staff can, will come up with some language.
Yeah, the, the, uh, ordinance tonight approves the development agreement and substantially the terms submitted. So any fine tune tweaking after tonight, things like this around the edges, we can certainly do and, uh, have it executed at later date.
Okay. So then the other question is how do we feel about inclusion of, uh, right of way costs within the TIF, um, eligible TIF costs? Um, from my perspective, you know, we, we had a, we had an analysis done, uh, you know, a financial analysis, um, that cost was in there and that cost was found to, to not be, um, provide an excess return on the developer's dollars and without it would provide a lesser return. I, I mean, um, I, that's why, if you were, that's why it's there is be, because it was, uh, trying to find that right level that made sense for the developer to come forward and do this improvement. And, um, and it met, and it's, and, and having that cost in the project, it, it still met the, the but for analysis by our financial advisors. So I think it's, uh, I don't have an issue with it being in the, in the TIF project or the TIF program myself. It's in, it's in our documents, but, uh, we're, we're doing, we're doing our discussion now, Daryl, so we'll, uh, we'll share those with you.
I, um, agree, you know, it could have been more of the money, could have, or the land cost could have been a part of it. Um, so I, I, and everything has been developed and agreed upon by, well, not voted on, but, you know, developed based with that in there. So I, I think moving forward with other projects in the future, that's something that we can look at right away or, you know, set a policy on, um, you know, as we look forward in the future at different projects that are coming along. Definitely something to keep in mind, Kevin.
Any other thoughts, Rob? So I, I think the consensus that I'm hearing from what, that we would, are okay with leaving that cost within the TIF, um, project, so. If, if we have, uh, gone through all the discussion items, I think now we're ready then for the motion on the ordinance.
The ordinance is in the last page of your memorandum, day, May thirty-first, and it would be ordinance number two, four, six, seven.
So I would invite anybody if they chose to, uh, make a, a motion regarding this ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we pass ordinance number two, four, six, seven, um, of the governing body of DeSoto adopting a redevelopment project plan for the High Commerce Drive redevelopment and approving, uh, development agreement.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion of the motion? It does include the discussion we had earlier, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll make sure that's included. Okay. Cleared everybody, all right? Uh, roll call, please.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
And the council, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Our next item, new business, present.
Mayor, we have three, uh, three B to do.
I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't get that in my modified here. All right. Any discussion on the final plat? Do we need a presentation on the final plat?
Brad, go if you need one.
Just to introduce the item.
Just to recap some of the items that we had at the planning commission meeting. Um, it is in substantial compliance with the preliminary plat that was approved by the planning commission. A couple of things that, uh, at the planning commission weren't totally wrapped up yet were the access agreements with Harps and Jake's Fireworks, private roads. Those have been completed. Um, and there was also revision of street names that have been addressed as well. The addresses have been approved at this time by Johnson County EMS. So everything is in compliance with our final plat procedures and it is, as I said, uh, in compliance with the preliminary plat approved by, by commission. Now, one last thing, also there's restricted use access on the Commerce Drive. That was in the preliminary plat, it's also part of the final plat as well.
Okay, any questions on the plat? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the Hightown Commerce Park final plat?
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, council, mayor, motion carries.
All right, now we will go to new business for a presentation of earth, wind, fire and water exhibit. Rose?
Rose Burgweger, um, ninety-one sixty Cedar Creek Room, DeSoto. And, um, as, um, you were coming or leaving, um, you probably noticed there's, um, lots of art out in the hallways. And this is, um, the earth, wind, fire and water exhibit. And it was inspired from the, um, recent summer issue of Discovering DeSoto that I know of you have seen. And, um, with, um, DeSoto City Hall, I just wanted to also note that, um, several other Johnson County city halls also display art. Um, City of Lenexa, Prairie Village, Roland Park and Leewood, um, also have displays and are, and there's really a strong, um, emphasis of the arts in Johnson County. And so it's, um, great to have DeSoto right up there too with all that, so. Um, and then in addition, um, briefly, um, this display was really a, a collaboration, um, from the Arts Department, City of DeSoto and Discovering DeSoto. And the cover shot here was actually done by a member of the, um, Northwest Consolidated Fire District when they were doing a preburn several years ago at Cedar Niles. And that piece is out there. And then, um, the, another venture with the arts and music by the City of the Summer Sunset Concerts, um, which I've really enjoyed going to, um, our photo was, um, from our council member here and, um, Rod Daniels. And even the logo with the collaboration because, um, Mayor Rick Walker sent me a little sketch of having a sun come up and, um, and so, and I happened to be in Florida and I saw kind of a logo with some swirly things there. And so that all came together to become our promotional piece that were all the, um, every order rec postcards. And, um, so it's interesting how that all came together and, um, it was kind of fun, so. Um, yeah, and then, um, you know, the artwork here really, um, there's shots from DeSoto and there's also, um, a lot of photography showing the beauty of Kansas and of course the Flint Hills. And, um, so I hope you take some time to enjoy that. And then, um, earlier this year, the Johnson County Arts and Heritage Center approached the Rotary and the Arts Council about, um, helping with a, um, reception for the sculpture at Lexington Lake Park. And I think that began a good relationship with the arts, um, center there. And, um, the Summer Sunset Concerts, um, we're able to have a, um, full page ad in the playbill, um, at Theater in the Park. So if you go to any of those, um, plays this year, um, there's a full page ad of our Summer Sunset Concerts. And then at, um, Riverfest Park, there's a huge banner for, um, Theater in the Park. And so it's been kind of a neat venture to see a lot of collaboration going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Next item is four B, consider annexation of three, five, nine, six, zero, West Ninety-Fifth Street.
Thank you, mayor and council. What's ahead before you is a voluntary annexation agreement. Property is on seventy-fifth, or pardon, Sunflower Road and Ninety-Fifth Streets, kind of catty corner to our water tower out there. The, um, applicant has requested that be annexed into the city of DeSoto. Uh, as you can see, the develop, or the annexation agreements are included in your packet. They've all been assigned and approved, notarized, et cetera. Uh, the one thing that's kind of interesting about this, there is a caveat that the current owner of the property, if the purchaser doesn't close on it by July thirty-first, they would request that the city council de-annex the property. And so had Patrick, um, craft some language which was included in that agreement and that is been approved by the purchaser, potential purchaser and the owner. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Sorry, I have two other questions, it just occurred to me. Does the land, um, adjoin? Because I think the water tower site, um, we did as an island annexation, Mike, you remember?
No, that's actually, that was contiguous.
Okay.
It was contiguous directly. Across the street. Yeah. Right. And this would be contiguous to directly.
Fair enough, I just want to make sure because if it was an island annexation, you.
Oh, can't use that.
The county, yeah, that doesn't count.
No.
Thanks.
So anyway, um, that's the only kind of interesting caveat. I know, uh, Mike's had a lot of discussions with the, um, purchaser and potential developer of the site. But at this point, we don't have any, um, authority to rezone, do a site plan or any kind of reviews or anything until it's within city limits. So this is the first step in moving that process forward.
Yeah, so we, we don't have any, um, formal planning applications on files, is that correct, Brad?
That's correct.
Okay, um, we have been talking with, it's a, it's a logistics company out of Texas who wants to relocate kind of back, it's a back home sort of a relocation for the owner. Um, he looked at several properties around DeSoto, settled on this one. Um, EDC has been very involved with this one, um, in getting him here, having initial meetings, talking about the possibilities, uh, the challenges. But, um, our understanding of the project is that it's about a three million dollar investment. Sarah, shake your head if I say anything, uh, out of, out of line. Um, three million dollar investment, looking at, um, initially thirty jobs. Um, what they do is they arrange freight movements from, you know, different areas of the country. Uh, the building will consist of twenty thousand square feet office and warehouse facility. Uh, on occasion, there will be, uh, truck loads that need to, need to land for a day or two, have a place to stay, maybe overnight, maybe for a couple of days. Uh, this won't be an in and out twenty-four seven trucking operation, but on occasion, logistically, they need that flexibility. So essentially, that's the project. Um, the owner thinks that there's a great growth potential, uh, with the company and his goal is to have a hundred employees within three years, I think, is what we've heard. Yeah, so this is kind of just the start, but really, we've been, we've been talking with Mr. Sims. Sims Global is the company, uh, been talking with him for at least six months. So this would be the first step in the process and obviously there would be a rezoning, the, so the property would maintain its county zoning designation, uh, within the city. Uh, and then our understanding is the applicant wants to proceed with a rezoning request and then after that would be a site plan approval. So that's where we are in the process. I understand, um, Olson Associates is, uh, would be his, his civil engineer and they have a couple of representatives here in the audience. Um, maybe I've said too much already, so.
Any questions from council on this?
Are there, like, great fees for us when we annex and de-annex? That, if we do have to de-annex, that.
No fee, no.
No, we don't have even an annexation fee.
We don't have an application fee, no. This is all pro bono work here.
We're going to add that. Keep working on that.
Well, the, the one thing though that you do, um, uh, it is, it is appropriate to consider is that you will be taking over maintenance responsibilities. Um, so right now, Sunflower Road is a boundary road and we've got a gentleman's agreement with the county as to who maintains which boundary roads. Currently, Sunflower is one of those that the county maintains. Um, with this annexation, I expect that, that gentleman's agreement, um, we will be maintaining at least this portion, this quarter mile portion of Sunflower. Uh, so essentially, that's what we're taking on.
We had to kick in for a chip and seal anyway, so we're still.
Yes, we did.
We're already maintaining it.
Yeah.
So we want to make this ordinance?
If we're good, if you have more questions, I will.
Yeah, I would look for a motion to, uh.
Make a motion, we give the ordinance number two, four, six, nine. Yes, it would be the annexation.
No, annexation.
Do we have a second on the motion? Second. Okay. Any questions or discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor and council, the motion carries.
Okay, our next item is DeSoto fireworks sales permit applications and permit fee waivers.
Yes, council, um, Steve Chick handles these applications and along with the fire chief, uh, does approve the locations, uh, all these are temporary locations for fireworks sales. Uh, we only had three of them this year. We've had as many as six or seven apply. Or ordinance allows for as many as six and if, if we get a seventh one, then we draw straws, uh, to see who gets to, um, who gets to sell fireworks. So this year, we've got the Methodist Church and Jake's Fireworks. Uh, Reverend Prothros here in the audience tonight representing them. Uh, there's also one from Garrett's Worldwide Fireworks, uh, and then they also, uh, the VFW Post. Our policy, um, allows for the permit fee to be waived for local nonprofit organizations. So the Methodist Church and the VFW both apply for those. So if you're so inclined, recommend approval of all three and waiver of the fees for the, for the two who qualify.
Uh, individual motions on these, please.
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the DeSoto nine Methodist Church, Jake fireworks, fireworks permit and, uh, fee waiver. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second, any questions? Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carries.
Make a motion, we approve Garrett's Worldwide Fireworks permit.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Roll call, please.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carries.
Make a motion, we approve the DeSoto VFW Post six, six, five, four fireworks permit and fee waiver.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hahn and Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carries, mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, item four D, consider agreement with KBS Construction for the design and permitting of the Riverfest bathrooms.
Uh, yes, council, you'll, uh, recall several meetings ago, we talked about the location for these and our preferences for. we talked about the location for these and our preferences for the building size and what we thought this, this effort might cost in general. We pitched the idea of entering into essentially a design-build contract with KBS for a complete cradle-to-grave delivery of the project. In, in working through that, the particulars of that agreement, we learned from the state that we're gonna need a pretty detailed permitting process. This location where we want to put this is eight foot below the floodplain elevation, and it's well within the floodway. So the floodplain is consisted of flood fringe areas and then floodway. And the floodway is closer to the river, it contains the river. It's the area that typically you need to remain clear of obstruction so you don't cause a worsened flooding condition. When you want to construct a building in that area, you're required to do a detailed analysis to show that that building's not gonna cause problems. So the permitting on this, in addition to that analysis, we're also gonna have to give ourselves a floodplain development permit. And so by our virtue of participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, we require for those applicants to floodproof facilities that are in the floodplain or propose to be in the floodplain. And that might mean that we have to elevate some mechanical equipments or otherwise floodproof the area that those, that that equipment is in. All those things could impact the cost of construction. So when you go to negotiate a set fee for the total project, KBS or no, or really, nobody really has an idea of exactly how that might impact the cost. So what we did is an agreement. Do I need that?
They need to sign it.
Yeah, you need to sign.
Sorry.
Sorry. The agreement is a two-part agreement. Essentially, it allows us to engage in that, the permitting work and some of the design work to the stage where we have a reasonable idea of what the, what the construction is going to be, whether we have to elevate it or what we have to do to floodproof it, some of those materials. So the agreement's in two, two parts. The first part being that design work, and there's a total fee for that design work of $28,400. At that point, or, you know, as soon as we can identify what the total cost might be, then we'll negotiate the construction phase that will have a guaranteed maximum price. But we can't do, really do that until the permitting stuff is almost complete anyway. The construction phase requires a separate authorization from the council. So we'll be back with that, with that agreement at that time. So right now, recommend approval of the agreement that you have in your packet. I don't know if Patrick's had an opportunity to fully review that, so I suggest you contingent that on Patrick's review with the funding to come from our unspecified initiatives in the 2019 budget.
Questions for Mike?
I have a question for Patrick. Patrick, my son works for KBS, Yips thing. Thank you.
So are all of the facilities then that are on the proposed project here gonna run into the same issue? And why was this not, I mean, we, did we not know this when we developed this little plan?
Yeah, I think, I think it was known. I think we did know that. That we, certainly in the floodplain. Some of these, like the shelter...
It probably won't because it doesn't obstruct.
Yeah, it's just poles.
If it's open, it won't.
Okay. So it'd be mainly this and that.
Any vertical that has a face that would interfere with the flow of water would have to be evaluated.
If it got high enough and the water flooded over and took it off is what it's all about, correct?
Well, it's, it's really about not flooding upstream properties or your neighbor, making the flooding condition worse, that's what.
By it going off into the water, though, is what we're saying.
So the study's gotta verify what, 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 it should be a no-rise. The condition you would look for is you don't want this structure to raise the 100-year flood level. So you'd have to study to verify that that is the case. And if it's not, then some other mitigation would...
Yeah, you'd have to mitigate some, somewhere else, maybe, you know, excavate some other area that makes the hydraulics better. You know, I know you're, you're throwing a, kind of throwing a BB into the ocean here a little bit, but, you know, that's, that's the process and it's pretty clearly defined.
Well, you know, I get it. I just was curious if that was taken into consideration when we...
Yeah, I mean, we do have fairly limited vertical stuff that we have going on there anyways.
Yeah.
The shelter or the scale house was a reuse of an existing structure, which I assume was already considered and permitted and then...
Okay.
And I don't, I don't think the shelter house should be any issue because it's, there's no walls.
Because it's open. And when we started talking about a total dollar amount on this, so on the page, if you go up the page, the $198,000, how much? Is this totally extra on top of what?
No.
Some of this is probably part of that or not?
So remember, and I, I meant to wipe that cost out because this would have been the cost to buy it from the prefab there and Arizona or somewhere and bring it in and some of the other. With the KBS, the discussions we had with Dave Anderson, KBS, we think we can do it for about $50,000 less than that. So it was somewhere around 150 where we expected. And the 28 grand that we're looking at now would have been included in all that.
Okay. So we're not dollar amount huge over, maybe somewhat, but not?
We just don't, yeah.
We don't really don't know.
We don't know how it's gonna affect the construction right now. We won't know until we do the work.
Right. Right. Good deal.
Any other questions?
Then I'll make a motion. We approve the design-build agreement with KBS, the total design phase services of $28,400 with funding to come from the unspecified initiative line item and the general fund upon contingent on this, the attorney looking at the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
You over at Montreal? Mona Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion carries.
All right. 4E, consider bids for fire station parking lot paving and striping.
Thank you, Mayor. What's up before you is staff report that Mike and I put together on the bids for the fire station parking lot and striping. I guess I'll cover the bidding process. And if you have any questions on the use agreements with Northwest Consolidated Fire District, you can ask Mike about those and how it's going to work with them. But basically, you've got a layout and a design that was put together by, by staff. What we have proposed was to mill around the entire edge of the parking lot to, and then overlay the parking lot to repair some of the andulations and, and patches that have been occurring there over the years. And then, of course, to re-stripe it, be more efficient so we can get more parking spaces in our downtown area. And also, we would be redoing the approach and the curb in concrete off of Weah Street. There's gonna be a net gain of parking spaces, as you know, this is part of the impacts it caused Coffey's had, which is terrific. There's a lot more people down there, but they've been also now parking more on their downtown streets. And also parking in front of the post office, which we've also noted, we're gonna add some signs to reserve some spaces for postal customers only. As you can see, the, the lot is quite a bit more efficient than what was there before. In fact, I don't know that really the public uses that lot at all because it's, it's not marked, it's not encouraged. No way really knows that they do have the ability to park there. And then, of course, it's not striped particularly well. It's not striped at all at this point. There are some low spots that will need to be taken into account for there's some dips and undulations and all of these things. But I did make that clear with the contractors that bid on the project, that they should visit the site. It's not perfectly level. There will be some considerations of some additional asphalt in some of these areas that will need to be filled in. Anyway, with that, Little Joe's Asphalt is the low bidder. They have done work for the city previously, prior to my tenure here. However, I have on occasion had to talk with them about some projects that they had bid on previously and feel confident that they'll do a good job for us. If you have any questions, I'm certainly standing for those. And then I know Mike has coordinated some with the fire district on these improvements as well.
My only question, right, I don't understand why we're going with two parallels along the street when we had the four or five.
Well, and my question tails, I mean, is exactly along that line because I read the justification that the fire chief was wanting better visibility. So if that is the case, my question would be, if they need better visibility, can we? Because we're trying to maximize the number of parking spaces. Could it simply be that it's left angular parking like that, but the one closest to the fire station is eliminated?
That's what I, why.
To where you end up with three spots instead of...
And you could actually add one further to the...
Yeah, possibly add one. Where instead of parallel parking, you're still getting...
The same number, but just slide them further away.
Well, even if you don't add one, you're getting three instead of two and potentially four if you move one closer to the intersection. And that would still provide better visibility for the fire department. That was my question as well, so.
That's what I had drawn on my...
Good. Yeah, no, that's absolutely doable. Brad, was the Little Joe's bid, did it include the striping out on the 83rd and Weah?
Yeah, it did.
You did, okay.
So this would impact...
Well, maybe a little, yeah.
I don't know.
No, I think, I think that's a fine idea. And, and as, as whether or not we can go further west, I'm sorry, further east with those. You know, if you'll, if you'll see, every intersection's got quite an area where it looks like, gosh, there could be some parking there.
There's 25, it should be 25 feet from the, I mean, that's, that would be the dictating.
That's enough? Yeah, I don't know if there's enough there.
So I mean, if we can get four, I would agree.
Or maybe we could narrow them up a little bit.
Even if we don't, we can still maintain three instead of two.
Yeah. Okay. No, that's, that's an easy change to make to the plan.
I think we've got more than we need, though. I mean, I, I've laid a, a number out. I think we got a little bit of extra space there that we could squeeze another one in.
Oh, space on the, on the east.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other sections, I did look at sightlines there and sight triangles of the other intersections. And it looks like we did that before when we laid them out because they're right, they're, they're right where they need to be, really. I think if we, if we encroach too much more toward the intersections, we'd have visibility problems.
Well, I, I agree with the re-striping. As one who has driven out of that place for 20-some years in a fire truck, the deletion of that one parking space will help. Is it gonna, is that parking lot gonna be labeled public parking? Are we gonna put a sign?
We could do signs. The thought was, you know, I hadn't, I, I don't know how much encouragement the public's gonna need to be able to use that. But that's sort of the justification for us doing the improvement, you know? Because right now, I, it's not really well-used or much-used by the public. It kind of is for the fire department, but we definitely will encourage these.
Well, like when there was crafts folks up in there during certain times of the years, that parking lot was well-used.
Yeah.
And I didn't see people parking in there. Parade times, they used that.
Parade times.
And I think, well, one, I guess one of my concerns with it is, is that it, it should be public parking, if that's what we're trying to achieve, and if we're gonna fund it. If we're funding to replace it for the fire department, then that, I, I totally have a different opinion on double taxation.
Yeah, no, it's public park, that's the idea.
I think we should label it public parking.
I think it'll get figured out pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah, with the other, with the few being, or the four being labeled for fire department only, it kind of, I think, opens up the rest of the public.
Yeah.
Well, and that's also where even if it's not signed, the businesses like Coffey's Coffee can easily say, hey, feel free to park over here, too.
We can put that tag on Google Maps, too.
Yeah.
That that's a public parking space.
Well, and there's a new yoga place right across the street now, so this'll...
Oh, yeah.
That'll allow some parking on Saturday mornings when Wanda's is full and there's no parking along there, so this'll be good.
Okay. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the bid, the proposal for Little Joe's Asphalt in the amount of $28,289.45 with funding from the unspecified initiatives line item and the general fund.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Mona Michael?
Might have left.
Uh, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carries.
Number F, consider charter ordinance number 27 pertaining to the commencement of terms of elected officials.
Yes, Council. Explain this in the memo that I included in your packet. But since we currently have the terms set out in an existing charter ordinance, in order to change those, we need to do that via charter ordinance. So what I included in the packet is Charter Ordinance 27. If you adopt that, that will, there'll be a 60-day period. And assuming there is no protest, we would then have the flexibility to pass a regular ordinance, which I also attached, but we won't take action on that tonight. And then that, that would change the, the term to start the first meeting after the election is certified.
Okay. Questions on this? A motion?
I'll make a motion. We adopt Charter Ordinance Number 27 as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mona Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane? Ritter?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Mayor, motion carries.
Okay. Number G, consider Planning Commission's recommendation for zoning change at 30495 West 95th Street. Brad, is this you?
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item on the Planning Commission agenda the last month. The applicant has asked to have their tract rezoned. They like to do a lot split and change it to rural suburban. Right now, the tract is agriculture, a rural ag. But our requirements say you have to have 10 acres for a house on rural ag. And their property, of course, is 19.4 acres, so they can't split it and be able to build a second, or have a house on a second tract. So they requested to have it rezoned to RO, rural suburban. So you can see the Corliss Court, Post Oak Circle, all those properties are rural suburban. So it's consistent with the use in the area. I did get some questions by some of the residents off of Post Oak Circle that backed up to the property. Just concerns about, you know, was it gonna be subterrinated? And then once I explained the, the apple, I just wanted to split it into one additional tract and build a property or build a house on it. So that seemed to take care of many concerns they had. We did go through the, the process that we typically do with all rezonings. All the items came up in a positive or no-impact type of recommendation. You can go through those in your staff report. But it's really basically gonna be no impact to the residents or road network or public safety by having this changed from rural ag to RO.
Okay. Questions for Brad?
Stand by for any questions.
On the RO, is there a limit, a number that could actually go on it? I mean, I know right now he's saying he should split it, is there?
I mean, technically, he could.
But he couldn't split it again without...
No, you're gonna do a split, yeah.
We have this one split, and then any, any future division would require Planning Commission approval.
A property owner can only split one time.
One time, and so then they, you have to...
But with the zoning, it could be if he chose to do it and replot it in the future. It could be done differently.
Could be, or it could be rezoned to, you know, R1, if sewers or something else was available.
Yep. Any other questions?
Patrick has prepared an ordinance if you're inclined to approve. And that is, where it should be, if I remember that number.
2470.
Anyone wish to make a...
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2470, adopting the rezoning.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second one.
Hey, good job, Kevin.
Mona Michael. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Mona Michael?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. Motion carries.
Okay. That concludes our regular... Okay, that concludes our regular agenda.
Executive session. None?
None this evening.
All right. Advisory report, city administrator.
Uh, three things for you tonight, Council. The first thing, you may have heard in the community, there's been some discussion and we heard a couple meetings ago, some residents came about the sand pit application that Leavenworth County is currently considering. They scheduled a public hearing in front of their planning commission on June twelfth. And I attempted to attend that planning commission, but when I entered the hallway that led to the room of the meeting, I couldn't hardly get in the hallway. There were so many people there. And so I, I believe for that reason, they, they continued their discussion, tabled it until July tenth. I think they're going to look for a bigger venue to hold that, to hold that public hearing. But it wasn't a total wasted trip because I was able to meet with the landowners, discuss, discuss their views and opinions on it. I met with the applicant's engineer. I met with the applicant's cause sand, a number of the neighbors, Leavenworth County Planning, Leavenworth Commissioner or two. Anyway, had a lot of discussion, heard really kind of all sides of, of the issue and it's, it's clearly a controversial one as, as these types of operations often are. The staff recommendation from Leavenworth County Planning Staff is, is to approve with a number of conditions. And if you'll remember, we, we gave some feedback on the application that really focused on three areas. One was traffic, well, there was water quality and the last one was noise. And the staff recommendation, in my opinion, addresses fully our three of those, all three of those concerns. We wanted them to require that birmingham be put up around the pit so surface water couldn't enter the pit. And we wanted water quality monitoring throughout the life of the project. That, that, both of those conditions are included in this, in the staff recommendation. They've also included provisions for noise barrier along the south, the south line of the property. So that's been addressed. And then lastly, the staff recommendation is that no truck traffics, no trucks be allowed south of the site essentially. So at this time, of course, they still haven't technically held the public hearing at the planning commission. And this is a use permit, so it's a lot like our process where the public hearing is held at the planning commission level and then they forward a recommendation up to, in their case, to the board of county commissioners. And the board of county commissioners is, will be the ones that actually approve of, approve or disapprove. And my expectation is that there will be an ordinance for their consideration at that, at that juncture. And I want to make sure that those staff recommendations are forwarded into that ordinance just to kind of protect our interest in that, in that account. So if you have any questions about that, I do, I did get all the application materials and the staff report and all those. I have those available if you're interested. So I'll be going back on July tenth and I'll let you know what happens.
And Mike, Mike, if I could interrupt for just a minute, Mayor, I apologize, but now that we're through the business section, I am going to have to drop off. So I, I will check the video for the remainder of the reports. Thank you for letting me participate remotely and I will say, it all works pretty well with the video and.
Good.
And audio and everything. As long as everybody's got their mics on, this process works pretty well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye.
Mike, were you saying that you, so Danny, go ahead, Danny, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, um, oh, do we have to make provisions for decibel checks now prior for anything starting to see what our decibel level is now? So we have a base reference. That's the only thing that concerned me.
The, what, what are, I don't know that that's, what we had was that they would not exceed sixty-five decibels, which is what would be allowable in our ordinances. And I'm certain it's quieter than that unless a train's going by right now. So I don't, I don't know that a baseline number, unless it was higher than that now, would, would, would be. Do you have a, a means to take some sound levels?
Yeah, there, there is some means that we can get that wouldn't cost anything, but.
I don't know if we, we don't own a sound level meter.
No, there's some apps you can get on your phone, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I've never checked them against an ANSI.
Some of them are good, really.
Some that aren't.
Yeah, there's some not so good, so.
We probably shouldn't let everybody know that since we have policy based on you can't go above something.
Well, the sheriff's office does. They have all that.
Yeah, right, yeah. So when they handle the complaint. We don't, we don't typically. I mean, the tractor that piles that ground now would probably exceed that. Yeah.
Well, I just didn't, that's what my question, I just didn't know if we needed to, because you said, you know, if the berm, you know, we find out later that we're exceeding this. And then all of a sudden, the berm isn't going, isn't enough to delinquish this thing.
Right, right.
We've got to do something.
Well, that's a good point. So our preference would be that the rec, that the approval condition is a performance-based approval condition, such like a decibel level, rather than, they're pretty prescriptive about the berm they're going to build and how tall it's going to be.
That's what I would rather they say they don't exceed sixty-five decibels at the property.
At the same time, Leavenworth County has their own noise restrictions. I don't know. I haven't looked those up and seen what those are.
Okay, that's all I have. It's just questions, okay.
So Mike, were you mentioning that in addition to quarrying the sand for their own usage and refining, that would be open to potential retail, which that traffic would not necessarily have to follow the guidelines?
I, I didn't see that in the application materials, but I did have a chance to discuss with the ownership of Coffey's sand just right after the meeting or the non-meeting there. They did indicate that they would, you know, have it open to outside sales.
I don't have, I mean, they don't have an office to, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not, I really don't, I really don't know.
How could they really sell?
I mean, that's what they, that's what they indicated, but my comfort in that scenario is that the, at least the staff recommendation says no trucks go to the south. It says no. And if they follow the designated truck routes, which are all to the north. Now, if that, whether that gets forwarded onto the formal ordinance and passed as that, well, that's what we need to continue to monitor.
Number two.
Okay, number two. I have officially begun the recruitment process for communications and outreach coordinator. So the job position is posted on the city's website. I put it on Facebook and there's an ad on indeed.com. So if you know anybody that might fit that mold, send them our way.
I heard Edgerton just hired somebody in that capacity.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. Wait, wait, a couple of months?
Yeah, about a month ago or so.
That's long, that's long enough to start looking for other positions. I, yeah, would be interested to see what their, what their pool of.
You might call Beth and see what kind of.
My thought on the position though, remember we, I mean, it's, it's technically, it's in, well, we included it in our draft budget for twenty twenty as a part-time position. I still think that job is a part-time position, but I also know that we have plenty of work to backfill that position. Because remember when Kathy left, we're filling with, with Erica and we're not backfilling Erica's utility building position because she's going to be able to do some of that too. I think similarly with, with this position, there will be some time to help, help me in some of my tasks, help Bonnie. I'm thinking take over the IT coordination stuff from Bonnie is a good, it just kind of depends on the person we get and what their skills and strengths are. So that's a part of that. And Danny mentioned grant writing, so you know, we've included that in the, in the possible duties as well. So looking forward to that and getting somebody on board to help with that. I know that's a, and Kevin will see, I guess, later. I think he'll be happy that we're recruiting for that now because it's a big priority for us. The only other thing is our concert tomorrow night, Landbrush. Food starts at six thirty, band will start at seven. You should come down. Kevin, you got your T-shirt there?
Danny, are you coming down?
Dry.
Good. Would you bring your drone? Would you mind, excuse me? Could you pop up like right behind the band and get a crowd shot or two if you, if you come down and bring your drone, that'd be pretty, I know Rob's going to be elsewhere.
Yeah, great.
Sure. I know we were out of town, but they're well attended. The first one was probably two to two fifty, I'd say. Last week we probably had five hundred, I would guess. It was a good concert last week, good crowd.
And then the, the last one on the twentieth will be sellout and then we'll wrap it up with our Fourth of July celebration. So that was it. That's my report.
Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Good report, thank you.
Brad?
Just got one item. I'm really happy before we do the final draft now.
All right, thank you. Lana, you haven't been here for a while. You have anything to say tonight?
I do. First of all, thank you all for your support and for those of you who came to Birmingham, you made me feel very special. And I was still getting emails last week from clerks commenting about, wow, you're a small town and you had that many people show up. That's awesome. And it was awesome. And I'm getting used to Minnie on my new Apple Watch, so thank you all for that. And to Bonnie for following Mike's direction and getting something ordered quickly. Bless Bonnie's heart. But also I wanted to tell you, remind you that since the Fourth of July is our council meeting back in January, the council voted to move that to Wednesday.
We had great foresight, didn't we?
Yes, you did. So July third will be your council meeting night. Same place, same time, different dates.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, council comments. Lori, would you like to start tonight?
Uh, I don't think I have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Rob? Kevin?
Well, I haven't been here for a while, so what about our traffic light update? Is it sixty days?
Yeah, um, have you heard anything from Joel?
Oh, man. Capital Electric's doing it and I'm bugging my engineer to call them about twice a week to say, when are they going out there? They've got, you know, equipment's all in, so it's just the scheduling and I haven't, I haven't heard back. He's, I'm sure he's getting tired of me asking him.
He sure is. He mentioned that the other day.
He's probably getting tired of me asking too, so. When is their deadline? They had, uh, sixty days.
Sixty days. I think they're thirty days into it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For about a week's worth of work.
About a week, maybe we're going to have to work.
Secondly, this, this thing here that we vote on, I didn't attend that last meeting. Should I sign this? Or should I abstain from that vote on this?
Oh, that pay ordinances?
Yeah. I didn't think about it till you passed it back.
No, it's.
It shouldn't be for tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure of course. Thank you.
All right.
That's all I have.
Danny?
Uh, nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, well, I don't think I have anything. Just come, come listen to some music tomorrow.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, we are adjourned.